Okay, hello and good evening. This is the Eastlaw Meadow, May 24th, 2021, regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Call the meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM and we are outside here at Eastlaw Meadow High School. We are following Massachusetts guidelines, CDC guidelines. We are able to go maskless for the first time in person collectively and I appreciate everyone's willingness to come out this evening outside on this lovely summer night and have our meeting tonight. So grateful that some normalcy has returned, grateful that Mr. Mackey agreed to record us out outside today. So with that, this meeting is being still held remotely in terms of our viewing audience in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We have the entire committee in attendance this evening and our first order of business. So minutes for approval. I would entertain a motion for the first meeting.
I move to accept the May 10th, 2021, open session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Next, move to approve the May 10th executive session meeting minutes. Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Number three.
Move to approve the May 17th, 2021, executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Bill. Discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Antonella, you're up.
I move to approve the May 17th.
Motion made by Antonella.
I was second.
Second by Beth. Discussion. Hearing non-holds, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. Thank you, Mrs. Letty, for those minutes. We have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee as we are still live Zoom meeting now. If folks are in attendance and would like to speak, now would be your opportunity. If so, you may raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Not seeing anyone raising their hand, so we will move forward. Thank you. Okay. We have committee and subcommittee communications. We'll start with Bill to my left tonight.
I'm also.
Okay, Sarah?
I want to say a thank you to the individuals who put out the signs for the seniors. I think driving around town, it's beautiful to see that reminder that we have seniors graduating this year and that they were able to get sponsorship for the signs. So that was nice to drive around town and be able to celebrate our seniors this year, especially given the year that they've had. And I was fortunate to attend an event alongside the superintendent at Mountain View School this past Friday, where some of our students were really able to talk about that district goal of social emotional learning and how to regulate one's emotions. They put us through a very rigorous PowerPoint and then engaged all of us in a competition using Kahoot, which also showed off some of the instructional technology that they've been able to access over the past year. So it was a really nice opportunity to see the students in action in the buildings and also an opportunity to engage with some of the teachers around some really great learning that the kids are having. So it was a nice opportunity and a good way to spend a Friday morning. So thank you for that.
Mrs. Trullio is a whiz on Kahoot. She took the first round, I believe incredibly fast.
They were excellent teachers. Those students.
Students were very good teachers.
Taught us well with the PowerPoint. So it was a nice way to spend a Friday. So thank you for the invitation.
Cool. Very cool. Antonella?
I attended a meeting with Ely this past week and they just wanted to make sure that teachers were reminded to fill out those applications.
June 1st, right?
Right. It's for the grants and the applications are due on June 1st.
Thank you. Send a reminder. Great. Thank you. Beth?
I just want to say I've been going to a couple of the track meets. It's nice to see the kids outside. Just doing what they're supposed to be doing at this age and enjoying themselves. You could see the lacrosse is out there. They're all out there today. Nice to see.
Yeah, certainly sports a little more back to normal. No masks for the players, which is great. You know, coaches are still wearing a mask and so nice to start to move back to normal.
I had also attended a volleyball game the past week and it was nice to see everyone was following all the guidelines, the social distancing, great sportsmanship.
That's still inside, the volleyball?
Yes, and that was inside.
Okay. Yeah, awesome. Very good. And just a quick note reminder, tomorrow is the budget hearing for the town. That's scheduled for tomorrow at 7 o'clock through the town council meeting. Their meeting actually begins at 6, but the official town public hearing is at 7. We will be represented tomorrow and we have that on our agenda further for discussion, but just wanted to make that note as we move forward. Okay. Thank you all for that and we will move forward now. We do, we have nothing on our superintendent's report this evening, so we will move right to the assistant superintendent for business. We have a gift from Ohio Field Prints.
The sale of spirit wear. I always like to acknowledge those local companies that sell this, so we thank you. Big Y, Walgreens, CBS, and Stop the Shop.
I move to accept the check of $46.59 from Ohio Field Prints.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Antonella. Discussion. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries five to zero. Project Lead the Way?
It is for maple shade and Project Lead the Way grant and this is for. We have a staff member retiring from the training and the amount is $1,229. Again, that's for maple shade, for Project Lead the Way.
Move to approve the Project Lead the Way sustainability grant for maple shade in the amount of $1,229. Motion made by Bill. Second by Sarah. Discussion.
I want to say that the Project Lead the Way at the high school, I don't know if people were aware of that, but if you take the class, you get within certain parameters. You can actually get college credit toward Rochester technical. So don't know if people knew that, but I was surprised because my kid got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. You gotta pay a little bit, but it's not, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have a discussion as I alluded to about. Vote, vote. I'm sorry. Thank you. Did we, we motion? I motioned a second. Yep, thank you all. Discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Should we let the airplane go by or should we get down? Okay. We now move forward. We have a discussion of end of year fiscal year 2021 budget and the development of the FY 2022 budget. There's a couple of things I'd just like to accomplish in this agenda item. A quick recap of where we are in terms of FY 22 budget development. As I mentioned, the budget hearing is tomorrow. Town Council is the authority for the budget. They have the approval authority and they will hear from the Finance Oversight Committee tomorrow. The chair has said that we would be able to speak as well to address our budget, the president of the council. And I would assume the town manager will be there for part of the discussion going forward. As you all know, we met collectively with the town manager, town council a couple of months ago. Talked about a level services budget would be the target for the, for the town. We decided as a, as a group to collectively go with a level services budget, although there were things we had foregone last year in terms of five positions that we gave up, including a assistant principal here at the high school and other valuable positions. We submitted a level services budget and the finance subcommittee has met multiple times and discussed cutting that level services budget by over $400,000. So the discussion tomorrow will be the two options, I suppose, for the council. The vice chair and myself, Mrs. Trullio and myself are scheduled to speak at the beginning of their meeting to address some of our concerns and some of the impact that a level, a cut to level services would do in terms of staffing. But also there will be an opportunity during the open forum for us to have some input as well. So hopefully between those two situations, we have an opportunity to present our case. Now, some of the things that I'd like to address this evening are the Finance Oversight Committee did recommend an increase to our school committee stipend. As elected officials, we all do receive compensation from the town. They had agreed collectively to increase that by just over $2,000. Was it 2,000? Yeah, 400. So about 400 for each member. So in lieu of the Financial Oversight Committee, I'd like to give that back because if they're going to look to cut our budget, I don't think it's right, even though it's, you know, it's $8 a month for us, which we're appreciative of anything, but for us to take some sort of salary increase without that. So with that, if the committee is in favor, I would like to say that if we could move to offer to not request an increase in school committee stipend pending discussion on by town council tomorrow. And if they recommend a decrease from level services, that we would request that our compensation not be increased. Does that make sense? Okay. Say helicopter this time. I love it, Don. It's great. Okay. 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 All right. Thank you, Don. I appreciate that. So anyway, sound from the helicopter being outside. So we're going to work collectively with the town council. So first off, if we could make that motion to offer that return pending tomorrow's discussion.
Pending the discussion tomorrow night with the town council.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion made by Bill. Second by Beth. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, I'll, I'll be sure to convey that to the town council president, so he's aware of that ahead of time. And then the other portion of it that I thought we could help in the discussion tomorrow is we did commit already because of the change in format to the education process this year. We've realized savings. We weren't all in the buildings. We did have some extended leaves and we didn't use the sub pay. We, we used the ESAR to pay for the extended subs or the long-term subs, but we didn't have as many short-term subs. So we were able to realize some savings at that. We've already committed to the Finance Oversight Committee and the town council to potentially returning up to 200,000. Since the difference that the Finance Oversight Committee from our level service budget is 404,000 to be exact, with some change. Then I would like to recommend that we, working with our assistant superintendent for business, collectively come up with a way to return up to $400,000 so that we can offer an olive branch, fill that gap for this year so that we don't have to realize cuts to staff this year and then collectively work with the town council to make this process more streamlined, more understandable, more predictable for all of us instead of, you know, us learning of potential almost, you know, for over 400,000 are cut two weeks before we're supposed to have the budget hearing. So in speaking with the council president today, I mentioned we would, we would discuss this tonight. I don't know what an effect it will have. Certainly he as one member of the whole council couldn't say to what that would be. There's no guarantees, but I think if we at least commit to offering that back and we'd have to do that in the use of our federal's grant as well. We'll have to be useful of that in terms of our budgeting to still have that sort of dollar amount left. Again, because it was a strange year, we didn't have all the staff in and we have some money from the federal government. We, we did discuss that we could potentially do up to the 400 for this year. Again, it would not be something that we could do on a regular basis. It's not like there's usually $400,000 in a budget. But because of the circumstances this year with staffing, with us being out remote for a lot of the year and because of the availability of the ESAR grant, we could potentially supplement for this year the 400 and thus maintain our level services budget because it would not impact the mill rate, right? Because if we fund that gap, it won't increase the mill rate. It'll be a discussion for next year, but at least the panic isn't on that we're all feeling and that we displayed last meeting. The one thing I would say is though the ESAR grant is a two-year grant and it's sizable, but we have big plans for it in terms of summer school program we want to do. We want to do catching up for students through all this debacle that we've been living through. We have a lot to do and that's really what that funding is made for is for the next two years for us collectively again to decide how to best support our students and give them a shot in the arm to get us further into, you know, what the world is now. So really, you know, I'm hesitant to offer any of that ESAR because it's going to become in handy. Plus, we don't know what next year looks like. We don't know what the year looks like after that. We're hoping for normalcy, but we're not sure of that. But that all being said, with the assistant superintendent, with the superintendent, we collectively feel that we can, we can do the 400, commit to returning that so that we can say to the council, we're working collectively together. If we can just do the level services this year, discuss the budget process going forward next year so that we're all not caught off guard, that, that that meeting where we meet with the town council, the Finance Oversight Committee, or the town council, the town manager and ourselves has some meaning in terms of when you say level services and come into level services, that should mean something. So I know I've been long-winded on that and I apologize for that, but it's kind of my thoughts. So Bill?
Because, let's face it, it's one pool of money for the entire town. We don't know what precipitated this $400,000 reduction. So to extend an olive, olive branch, using your terms Greg, I think is a, is a goodwill gesture on our part. Realizing that the discussion does have to take place next year, early on, to get a clear definition of either level funding or level services and what that means in the budget development process. So I agree with what you're saying and I think, I think it's a great way to approach tomorrow as a motion. Yeah, banging away.
Yep. If done.
But I'm also hesitant. We don't know what it's going to be like when all of our kids come back. And we don't know what their needs are going to be when they do come back. And we need to get them acclimated back to the way things were. So I do understand what you're saying, but I'm also hesitant about giving up some of that money. I, I just feel like we, we need it for our kids.
It's clear that there will be gaps that we're going to have to make up. There will be loss in learning just because of the nature of this pandemic in the education this year. So we're, yeah, but to the, conversely, I would rather say that we can fund our staff fully and not have to look to cut up to six positions this year so that we have our full staff back to deal with all these issues because the more staff we take away, the less we're going to be able to deal with those issues. So I.
And I'm not even talking about the learning gaps. It's more of like the social emotional stuff. We really, some of these kids, they haven't been back all year. We don't know what's been going on and we don't know how they're feeling, if they have anxiety or, or what. So it's, I feel like the number one thing is to make sure that our kids are socially and emotionally okay and then we can look towards like the learning gap stuff.
Yeah.
But I don't know. I know, but I, that stuff costs, it costs money.
Yeah, it does. Even the tents cost. We have $100,000 in tents for rental.
Yes, I know.
You know, so that's 5% of that, of ESAR 3, just in the tent. So I know, and that's, that's the point to ESAR. We want to be able to use that to bring us, catch us up and move us forward in, in so many different ways. So. Yeah.
We don't, the fear of the unknown.
Right.
That we do have challenges ahead of us and everybody's got to understand that, that this is a one-time deal. Then we're not going to keep doing it this way.
We won't, we won't have ESAR.
We won't have the ESAR.
And we won't have remote learning with less staff in the building. So Pam?
No, I was just going to say to Antonella's point, I was just going to say to Antonella's point, we know actively that our guidance and our social emotional adjustment accounts are, they're actively working on things on any given day. It's not like it hasn't hit yet. It's there already. It's just kind of simmering and we'll see what we get come the fall. So.
Yeah, and we're already working on some of those things, you know, in terms of the, the summer school offerings will be more than they have been, but also looking towards next year to getting us back to where we were. Pam, you have something?
$500,000 of that ESAR 3. The other thing I think folks need to know is that that grant, ESAR 3, does go through September of 2024. So its intention is not to just do one quick, you know, spend it all in one year to be very mindful and thoughtful and partner with your town on how best to strategize the, the best where our students are in town. So, you know, in doing that, as the business manager, the superintendent, we have the budget, of course. And I did to my third quarter, which was March 31st. But of course, since then, we've had our kids back, we've had expenditures. But there's been nothing normal about this year as we all know, nothing normal about last year either. So our spending has been very, very different. So I've been trying to analyze that for the school committee. And what I, what I can say right now is that, you know, I am confident that there are budget lines that may have funds remaining such as contract. Academic instructional software. Due to the remote instructional model with which the school year began, the district had to spend. And the ESAR, that left funds in our operational budget. You know, there's a lot of salary line items such as unpaid leave of absence. We did have staff, many staff that went on leave of absence and some of them were paid and some were unpaid resignations. We had quite a few paras that actually resigned and we had difficulty filling those positions. Therefore, there's, there's funds in those operational accounts. The ESAR grant did cover long-term subs since it was COVID-related. So right there is to be able to help with the sub line. Noon aides, you know, the folks were so grateful for our lunchtime to help us there. We didn't need them for three quarters of the year. So again, there's, there's salary lines there. Care professionals, extra duties that they normally do when all the, the kids are in the school for three quarters of the year. Those expenditures were down. Medical assistance for our special ed students, they chose not to come into the school. So we didn't need those services. So, you know, for all of these reasons, I foresee funds remaining in these salary accounts. The individual professional development accounts, typically these funds are spent through the year by individual unit A staff members utilizing the $650 outlined in the contract for each individual person. But that didn't happen this year for obvious reasons. It, it just didn't. Some folks, you know, did expend the PD money, but many did not. Supply accounts due to COVID, there's nothing normal about our, regarding our supply orders, not for custodial supply or the classroom supplies. You know, this year we focused more on disinfectants and hand sanitizers and those kind of expenditures were covered through the, the COVID grants, the CVRF and the ESAR grants. So, and, and the last one that I'm noting that I anticipate that there's going to be funds remaining is in the area of equipment and repair accounts. Obviously, if we're not in the buildings utilizing equipment, it's not going to break down and I'm not going to need the maintenance. So, you know, for all of those reasons, yes, I feel like we're going to have funds to be able to partner with the town on, on how to bridge this so that we can go into. And what I say, when I talk about that having funds, it rolls into the town's operating general fund into free cash. And that's what we're proposing to possibly bridge us into the next year so that we don't have a reduction in the budget so that eventually when these grants go away, we won't have like what's called kind of a funding cliff, like all of a sudden we've got all this money and then there's, then there's nothing there and it's, it's hard to fill those gaps. So we would really like to be strategic and, and do what's best here. You're welcome.
No problem. I would just add that I think Mr. Thompson and the committee here are really trying to offer a creative short-term solution to what really is a long-term concern and that we're trying to repurpose funds right now that are meant to benefit children to support the town as a whole and that that's not something that should be taken lightly nor should the situation that we're all currently in. I think the way Pam just described it in terms of trying to avoid this financial cliff is really important for people to understand and we need to ensure that we are, yes, safeguarding taxpayers and safeguarding the town's money, but at the same time, working to support the educational opportunities our students have afforded to them and that those are equally important and at sometimes competing interests. But I think trying to get creative and think of ways that we can stop this from getting any further than it needs or any bigger than it needs to get with a short-term solution is great. But to Antonella's point, we need to be thinking about the long-term and how we ensure that our kids are receiving the financial support they need so that they can continue to receive the educational opportunities they deserve. So I think it's just critical that we balance those, balance those competing interests as we make these decisions.
Okay, great. Thank you. The other issues I just wanted to address briefly in the discussion with the Finance Oversight Committee and I'm sure may come up with the council tomorrow, where there's a talk about enrollment here in the district. So this year because of COVID, we're down enrollment, 170 students, meaning families decided because, potentially because we were remote fully, that they could go to a private school or a parochial school and be in person. So a lot of students unenrolled, 170 of them. There could be other reasons also, moving out of town, whatever included in that. So with enrollment being that low, then our chapter 70, which is our state aid money, dropped because of our enrollment dropping 170 student, or 170 students. Since then, since that, that's all happened, we've had 63 students either re-enroll or new enrollments. So we're already a third back from that 170 down and you can enroll in school up to the first day of school. So a long time ago, we anticipate many, if not most, or pretty close to all, we don't know, in fact, will come back. So that 170 is kind of a red herring. It's not even 17 anymore. It's now 107 or whatever, or 107. So that being said, and that number can continue to go down. Also, chapter 70 formula, and I'm getting into the weeds, but was changed this year because of Student Opportunity Act. Eastlaw Meadow received a minimum increase versus other towns that received larger than the minimum increase. So because the formula changed this year, we saw a decrease. Never before in my tenure, and Bill, you've been here longer than I even, have the town correlated or related chapter 70 percentage increase or decrease to town increase or decrease, right? So that's never been correlated. In fact, we have a chart that shows there is no correlation between the two. And so to say that because our chapter 70 has gone down this year, we should cut the budget because we're down 170 students. Well, now it's 107 and next year, chapter 70 will start to come up again. But it has never been directly related to chapter 70. If we related the town side to chapter 70, none of us would be here for this process. We could just apply that percentage to the town budget and we'd be done. So to say that that is the reason, it's not. It's, it's, yeah, it's misnomer. So just wanted to clear up those two issues and we'll do that again tomorrow, hopefully with the town council. I tried to convey that with town council president today. But again, we'll try to convey that, those points because say those two points, the increase in the mill rate or the chapter 70 related to the town contribution and the mill rate calculation from the Finance Oversight Committee is actually down 5 cents in their projections instead of increasing. So to say that it caused an increase, if, you know, it's not, it's not true. It's a misnomer as well because by the operating budget as proposed, actually will drop the mill rate. So again, we'll make all these case points tomorrow. We're hopeful that we can come out of there with level services. The town departments that came in level are staying level and even some of the departments that made requests, the other departments within the town for additional staffing are being recommended. So it can't be a financial whole-town thing because some, some budgets are getting an increase and we're getting a decrease in level services. So that all being said, we are one town. We're going to continue to work on it tomorrow. Again, we're hopeful that with the olive branch of the 400, that'll bridge the gap to get us the same mill rate we would have anyway. The discussion about how we're coming back in enrollment and even our long-term projections are showing that we're pretty level. So to say that we're dropping because of COVID, the 170, it's an anomaly in that it's still passed. So we're fighting for the kids. We're fighting for the staff. We're, we're still in this. I, I'm convinced. So with these two measures, hopefully we get a little closer and that's all we can hope for. As I said, tomorrow is the, the meeting. If parents want to, want to give their concerns, certainly we would be open to that. It's a 6 o'clock meeting is town council, 7 o'clock is the hearing. If you log in, you have to log in through the Zoom meeting, which is on the website, the town website. If you go to the agenda section of under government, go to town council. If you click on your agenda, you can find the Zoom link there and you'll be asked to raise your hand, I would imagine, just like we do at our meetings. So Beth?
A person limit?
I think that's a town limit. So yeah, probably.
The town limit, okay.
100, yeah. The hearing? But if folks want to look at the agenda, uh, they can see the whole thing laid out, but it, the meeting does start at six. So I would recommend that if you want to get in, you probably to the hundred, uh, person point, get in, uh, if you have things to say. And I would just ask that, uh, you know, along the same points that we're asking for, we're, we're all one town, we're working together, level fund us, let's work on the budget process so that we're, we're better at this next year. And, and not create, create more panic in this town than we need to. I was sitting on the bleachers, um, at a lacrosse game just the other day. I won't mention the town, but they border us and I was listening to the parents and as soon as one of the parents had sat down, they said, uh, to another parent, I wasn't eavesdropping, it was just. You know, they're cutting, uh, up to six staff members here, uh, in, in East Long Meadow, right? And that was it. That was it. That was the point. That was first thing this person said when they sat down. So the word is out, it's really unnecessary and it doesn't do us any good, uh, as a town for that to be the narrative that's out there. So let's hope that that's not the narrative that comes out of tomorrow night's meeting.
So I mean, it's not, it's more about, it's more about then, okay, you're going to cut six staff members. What does it do to all the buildings when the, when the team, when the staff start hearing this?
Yeah.
Not healthy.
And what services are the kids going to miss too?
Correct.
You know, I mean, that's, it trickles down to your point. Yeah.
That's, that's what we have to be careful of. Those are the points that need to be made. Because we're in the education business. This is what we do, right? Okay? We need to educate others as to why we're requesting what we need.
In last year, um, you know, we worked collectively, we worked collaboratively and we, we had a, a decrease of five positions, as I talked about earlier, but we were at the table.
Yeah.
And we knew that COVID was here, we saw it coming. And again, the one town mentality, okay, we, we had some one filled positions. Um, so we decided that we would play ball with everybody else, play well in the sandbox. We, we agreed at the five positions cut last year. This year is different. We went through the whole process, met with the finance oversight committee, met with the town council. Never a discussion about cuts in services until two Thursdays ago at one o'clock in the afternoon, four hundred thousand dollar plus cut. So.
The level services budget request does not have those five positions in it.
Right.
So the five positions that we lost last year in those discussions that we knew, um, you know, we had challenges, fiscal challenges possibly in front of us. In the, as we met with different town officials, town council, we knew that there was a level services request. So we did not put those five, we did not restore those five positions into a level services request.
Okay. Which, um, I, I, I don't want to say also that if it was a level services request and that the school department could not ask for more because then it becomes our job. Uh, if we really feel that we need something else to ask for more than, than the level services. But this year, we felt specifically numbers of bodies in the building was a real, was part of the factor that we talked about as well with COVID still being, uh, alive and well. Not to bring more, uh, personnel necessarily in the, in the building, but also to try and meet this budget process fairly and equitably. And we thought we did that. Um, yeah. Um, what was the other point, Gordon? You were just talking about, um, it was another, uh, thing I wanted to make. But anyway, does anybody have, yeah, Antonella?
And, uh, like you said, last year we did help and we did support what the town needed. And everyone was kind of in survival mode and just trying to support each other last year. And I think, and everyone had to experience COVID, but I think what's really going to matter now is how we deal with coming out of COVID and how we're supporting our kids. So.
Yeah. The other thing, and thank you, Antonella, you're right. Um, the other thing in our budget request, level services is two point seven eight, right? So two point seven eight percent increase from last year would be level services for next year, right? Just waiting for the airplane to go by. I really like being outside, Don. Can we do this every time? It's awesome. I like the note minutes. I really just wanted to do that. Not the flying papers. So anyway, uh, two point seven eight, uh, is our request. Other town departments are lower than two point seven eight percent in their requests and their level services. So you may ask why, how do they do that? Many departments have increased their fees and so there's increased revenue. They don't, um, need as much from general fund. And so there could be some, um, slack in that part. The other part is within our request, we include an assumed percentage or an assumed increase for, um, our largest unit, which is a sizable amount of money. But we need to do that to ensure that the increase in their budget is funded. Other town departments don't do that. So they don't include any projected increases or they haven't included any projected increases. So they may come in at one point four, one point three. But then they have to come back and ask for subsequent funding from the council later on in the year. So we're not doing that, which, which is the difference between our two point seven eight and other departments, one and change. That's how there's that difference. I just wanted to point that out because it is glaring otherwise, but we're fully funded if we, if we, uh, get the two seven eight. So. Anything else on the subject? All right. We look forward to some lively discussion. I'm hopeful that the council at least takes up our proposal, takes into consideration our efforts. Um, and our discussion initially about level services, we, we, we've, we've done that. We believe we've, uh, acted in, in good faith and, and, uh, hopefully we can get through this at level services tomorrow. And then from there, start to discuss on what the budget process is. We all want what's best for the town. We all want to keep our taxes down. We all want good services in this town. It's a balance. We just have to be part of that discussion. Whew. With that, I would entertain a motion to, um, return to the general fund, four hundred thousand dollars from the FY twenty one operating budget at the end of the year. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you. Return.
Return four hundred thousand dollars, um, from the FY twenty one budget.
Correct.
Um, back to the.
The general fund.
General fund. Thank you.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Sarah. Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We can do it however. We have to do it, Don. Thank you for that discussion. Yeah. No, we just gave it back. We gave it back.
Yeah, we have to play the game. We have to play the game. I get it.
Goes back.
Yeah, we can't keep it.
We'll make it work. We're gonna make it work. All right. Um, next up on the agenda, Rotary Summer Concert Series.
Um, okay. So in your packets, uh, we have, um, a letter from Mr. Quimby outlining the dates for the Rotary Summer Concert Series as well as, um, giving some outline to how they will set up, um, not only the band shell, but the concession and, um, uh, portable porta potties.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
And then the, uh, band shell will remain in its spot and that works well? We're all good with that?
Yes.
Questions, concerns? Yeah, it is.
It is. This is actually, you know, if we're talking about sort of returning to normal operations, it's nice to see, let you, a summer activity come back. Right?
So I entertain a motion to, uh, approve the Rotary Summer Concert Series.
Both to approve the summer concert, Rotary Concert Series as presented.
Motion made by Bill. Second by Antonella. Discussion. We don't have dates on performance.
Yeah, in the packet. Yeah.
That's right. I saw that.
First one would be June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, and it's every week.
Uh, yes, going, going through August eleventh.
July third for the.
That's the fireworks. Yeah.
Are we doing fireworks this year?
That's the next, uh.
Next on the thing.
Next, uh.
That's awesome.
I know.
All right. Uh, motions are made. Second to discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Bless you.
Bless you. Fireworks.
So next up is a request again, um, from Mr. Quimby, who's, um, helping coordinate or overseeing coordination of all these different events. Uh, bringing back the Independence Day tradition of having fireworks, actually on July third, uh, on the actual Independence Day itself. Uh, and so this would take place again on the high school grounds. Uh, they would start setting up probably earlier in that week, somewhere around Monday, the twenty eighth, fencing off the back area where they actually, um, shoot off the fireworks. And then the viewing would be in the other area towards the parking lot.
Uh, crowd size, all approved by fire, police, CDC, health department, everything's cool.
Uh, fire and police are actually involved in the coordination of this. And I think as of the twenty ninth, we'd be meeting all requirements.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion, please.
Rotary Club Foundation request for the use of the ELHS grounds for the Independence Day fireworks, beginning June twenty eighth, lasting through July third, twenty twenty one.
Motion made by Bill, second by Beth. So the fireworks are on the third, as Mr. Smith, uh, said. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Uh, before we move on, did you, anybody get anything on the parade yet? Because participation for the parade is supposed to be in by June first.
We have not received any, any.
All right. Well, there is a parade committee meeting on Thursday. I will find that out. Yeah. Well, usually we, yeah, usually a form is sent out, but like I said, there's a parade committee meeting Thursday night.
Yeah.
When I get info, I'll let you know.
Mentioned it, but yeah, it won't be a problem. Just let them know. We'll approve it at this meeting.
Yeah, okay. I'll take care of it.
I mean, I know, I know that.
Yeah. I'll take care of it.
Yay parade!
Yeah.
I'll be there lining up.
Yep.
Uh, did we move that already?
We did.
And we proved it. Good. Yes. Next one.
So the next one actually is a, a new event and, uh, one that I think will be quite good. Um, the police department and, uh, I believe the health department, um, are putting together an event where they're calling it Have Coffee With A Cop. But it's actually not only focusing on coffee with our police officers, but also during that time, um, with each carload that comes in, they will be going through the safety requirements and how to use car seats in the, um, appropriate way. And so I think it will be a great event for our families with young children and they're looking to be in the high school parking lot, hopefully on Saturday, June fifth. They do understand that June fifth is our rain date, um, for graduation. So were that to happen and graduation switched to the morning of June fifth, they have a secondary, um, option of doing it at Meadowbrook.
Just so we're not out of order.
Point of order.
We're still at seven, three. So we have the whole seven, four now. We know that discussion, but do you want to touch on the, uh, Rotary Club for the sponsorship interview?
Oh, I apologize.
That's right.
Yep. Okay. Uh, so hold that thought on seven, four, going back to seven, three. Um, so one of the requests the last few years is that, um, we do get a number of sponsors to help us with fireworks. And the request has been that during the time, July third through the fifth, uh, which incorporate the parade, that we allow banners recognizing those sponsors to, um, be hung on the grounds, on the fencing and so forth.
Have we done this before?
Yeah.
Last two years.
I thought we were against science. Yeah.
Session, how many?
Yeah.
But I think it's so temporary.
Yeah.
That, that's the key.
That was the key. That's why.
It's like four times.
Yeah, it's just those days.
It's just to, you know, because they do get, you know, they get food trucks in here and all the other stuff. Yeah. Okay, I'd take a motion then, please.
Um, I move to allow banners to be attached to the fencing around the tennis courts, uh, between July third, um, and July fifth.
And the exterior fence. What's the exterior fence?
The turf field.
And the exterior fence to.
Of the turf field.
The turf field.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Antonella. Kathy, did you get that from Beth? Okay, thank you. Um, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. And finally, Coffee With A Cop. Mr. Smith has gone through this. Um, any questions on the?
Just that if you have an expired car seat, they'll give you a free one, which is fantastic.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. It's in it right here.
Yeah, it's a limit, I think.
Free replacement seats for those that are expired.
Great.
Let's get going, parents.
She need to come in early because.
Yeah.
Limited numbers.
Limited number.
But I think it's nice to do.
Our kids, I had to travel to Enfield to have them inspected and installed to, to make sure they were secured properly. So to know that that service is now able to be offered.
That's cool.
In town. It's great.
Yeah.
It's great. They're quite complicated. You really got to get in there and get them locked down, lean into it.
I know.
Forget getting them out. That's a whole nother story.
My poor kids. Lucky they're alive.
Okay. We have a motion. We'll need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion? Um, I move to, um, let's see, what do we got here? We'll read it right off here. Uh, I move that the high school parking lot be used for the Coffee With A Cop car seat safety on June fifth, twenty twenty one. And should I add in a rain, if it rains, they will have it at Meadowbrook School, just in case. If grad, yeah, if their graduation needs to be moved, uh, we will, um, allow it at Meadowbrook School.
Okay. Thank you. Motion made by Beth. Second by Antonella. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. We talked about, um, the clinic for COVID vaccines. Can you fill us in on that?
Little update on that. Um, so this Thursday, uh, afternoon into early evening, we will be, uh, partnering with the Islam Meadow Health Department and the Islam Meadow Fire Department and we'll be running a vaccine clinic that's open to our families. Uh, students twelve and up are able to get this vaccine and family members are also invited. If there are appointment slots that are available, please, as you sign up online, um, I sent a reminder out over the weekend, but I will send out another reminder, um, probably tomorrow with the, um, link to sign up. And, uh, we're hoping for a really successful event. Uh, three until seven. On Thursday, at Burchland Park.
At Burchland, three to seven, Burchland. I did, uh, in speaking with Amy, our health director, I offered my time, uh, traffic, whatever she may need. She said that would be great to have school committee representation. So if anyone else, um, has the availability, it would like to be three to seven on Thursday.
You don't have to stay all four hours. We'll be there.
I think it just demonstrates, um, uh, confidence in the process. You know, I'll speak to myself. I've been fully vaccinated. Both my chi- children, fourteen and sixteen, have been fully vaccinated or not fully. They're both in the process of being vaccinated. So personal decision it is for every family, but, um, you know, I feel that it's working. It's a doctor's to do this to be outside. So having it in town, run by, um, the health department with our, our school nurses is a great asset. Awesome.
Yeah.
So it should be productive.
I was not allowed to give injections, so.
No, that's a good thing.
That is a good thing. It's a wise decision.
Did you ask?
I did ask.
Gordon's willing to do anything. He really is. Let that be an example of he's willing to do anything.
Looking for the scrubs.
Okay. With that, if there is nothing else further, again, a reminder tomorrow night, budget hearing, town council, uh, stay tuned for, for any progress on that. And, uh, we'll be back in two weeks for our school committee meeting. Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by, motion to adjourn by Bill. Second by Beth. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you all very much for your time this evening and, uh, good night.